Good evening, welcome to the October 7th, 2015 Meeting of Members for a Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of August 5th, 2015, and August 19th, 2015. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. Tonight we'll be conducting six public hearings, the first of which is a rezoning application for approximately 3.4 acres located along Lidle Street to be zoned from Commercial Highway, which is approximately 2.3 acres, and OGR, approximately 1.2 acres, to a PND, Rutherford County Government is the applicant. Mr. Blomley, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you Chairman Lamb, and good evening to all of you tonight. Our first public hearing tonight is for the new Rutherford County Judicial Center. The property where the Rutherford County Government would like to build the new judicial center and parking garage is currently zoned CH and OGR. And if we can pull up the map on the TV screens. If the cable department could pull up the map, please. At any rate, the property on -- property is located on the north side of East Lidle Street and is bounded on its west side by North Maple Street and on its east side by North Church Street. That is where the proposed judicial center would be located. And the parking garage would be located along the south side of West Lidle Street bounded by North Maple Street and North Walnut Street.
They're working on it.
Okay. Excuse our technical difficulties. You see the property colored in -- well, if you could see the property colored in orange. It is a zoned CH, Commercial Highway.
Hold it up there.
Yes, yes.
Vanna over here.
Property colored in orange is zoned CH, Commercial Highway, and the property colored in purple is zoned OGR, General Office District Residential. Both of the existing zoning classifications are not appropriate for the proposed use. And not only the proposed use, but the proposed site design. The CH and OGR zoning classifications are more appropriate to suburban development and not necessarily appropriate for urban redevelopment such as this, where we want to have a more pedestrian scale, pedestrian-friendly environment that is more consistent with the existing development in the downtown area. So the applicants have made a request to rezone the property to PND, which is Planned Institutional District. And when we were evaluating the various zoning options for the property, we looked at the other existing non-planned development zoning classifications that we have to see if any of those would fit the proposed development and site design. And the closest we could come really was the Central Business District, but there were two things about the Central Business District that didn't really fit for the proposed development. One, the Central Business District has a maximum height of 75 feet, maximum building height. The proposed building is going to be 155 feet tall at its highest point. So even if the property were rezoned to Central Business District, the applicants would still need to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals and request a height variance. Also, the Central Business District has no landscaping requirements, and because most of the buildings are built right up to the property line, and there's no room for the perimeter planting yard. In this case, there is going to be quite a bit of green space on the site, and we felt that it really wasn't appropriate to eliminate all landscaping requirements. So we suggested that the applicants move forward with a planned institutional development. And the planned institutional development allows them to tailor the specific use of the property and the site design to the proposed development while at the same time assuring the Planning Commission and the City Council of a certain level of quality and a commitment to the quality that is proposed in the pattern book. So the entire block that is located where the judicial center is proposed to be located would house that six-story judicial center building, which would also have a subsurface parking area and Sallyport for the transport of inmates to the courtrooms. And it'll also allow for some judge parking on the bottom as well. The area where the parking garage would be located would be -- parking garage would be four stories, including the roof parking, but the applicants in their pattern book are also allowing for two additional stories and are building the structure to accommodate two additional stories if at some point in the future it is determined that two additional stories would be warranted on that parking structure. In addition, there is -- this plan also makes provisions for a pedestrian bridge over the intersection of Maple and Lidle in the event in the future a pedestrian bridge is warranted to be constructed over that intersection. That is not proposed at this time, but the plan makes provisions for that so that the applicants would not have to come back to the Planning Commission and City Council in the future to amend the program book for that pedestrian bridge. With that being said, I will introduce Mr. Brick Murfree, who is going to kick off the presentation for the applicants. And his design team is here, and I know they'll be happy to answer any questions before the public hearing, and staff will be happy to answer any questions as well.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission and staff. I'm Brick Murfree of the law firm of Murfree &amp; Murfree, and we represent the applicant, the Public Building Authority, which is tasked with the project of building our new judicial building and the ancillary parking garage. I'm going to keep my presentation relatively short and formal, and then hand things over to Mr. Matt Taylor with SEC, who's helping us with this project. Also present tonight is Mr. Jerry Preston of Pinnacle Construction Partners LLC. They're our owners representative for this project. Mr. Adam Nicholson and Mr. Steve Johnson of Gresham Smith are here, and they are architects on this project. And our whole development team will be here to answer any questions you may have at the end of the presentation. As Matthew mentioned, the property in question is 3.46 acres along Lidle Boulevard on two separate corners, and the property is currently zoned a mix of Commercial Highway and Office General. And our request before you tonight is to rezone the property as a planned institutional development. This property has been in programming and planning for more than a decade for the new courthouse. And the past two years, the Public Building Authority has really ramped up its efforts in design and discussion with the community. In programming this project, the Public Building Authority, along with Mayor Burgess, identified the need to have stakeholder input from groups from the community that would be most impacted. And in doing -- in identifying this, Mayor Burgess appointed a Design Review Committee made up of members of the bar, members from the clerk's office, the sheriff's department had a representative, as well as members from the county commission, members of the bar, as well as members of the Main Street Board. There were five Design Review Committee meetings, which we discussed architectural design, layout, functionality, as well as we had a tour of the Birch Building, which is a relatively new courthouse in downtown Nashville. And the project you'll see before you tonight is a result of a lot of thought, contemplation, discussion with the community, as well as discussion with these stakeholders. And I feel it's a very strong statement to our community, and I think you'll be very pleased. I'm frankly extremely excited to be working on this. This is the building that I hope to be practicing law in for the rest of my career, and I'm very excited about this. So the only thing I wish is my father was still here to see this. He'd be very proud that we've gotten to this step in the process. So that being said, I'll give you over to Mr. Matt Taylor, who's going to walk you through a brief presentation, and we'll be here to answer any questions you may have at the end. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Murfree. Mr. Taylor.
All right. Thank you Chairman Lamb, thank you Brick and Matthew. I do have a brief presentation, although I think they said pretty much everything I was going to say. I would like to show you some pretty pictures and give you some detail to go with exactly what they just talked about. So I want to start with kind of an overall perspective of downtown, the way it currently exists. You'll see, this is looking from the southwest direction over the entire downtown. City Hall is in the lower right-hand corner with Public Plaza, Historic Courthouse in the center. And our site would be up into the upper left-hand corner of this site. See, the city hall really provides a good closure on the south side of the formal downtown area. And right now, the north side of the square is fairly open, doesn't have a good defined ending point. And we feel like that with the construction of this project, this building being a public building, have a very formal public space outside, we'll act a bookend to the downtown in combination with the city hall and its public space, really enclose the formal downtown area, create some nice areas directly north-south of each other there. Matthew said the property is located at Lidle and Maple. The judicial center itself is in the northeast quadrant. That's currently where Moab is located and the existing drug court. And then the parking garage is where the old D&amp;J building was, or currently is. All those buildings will be torn down with the exception of the drug court building. It will remain because of its significant importance to our community. Sites itself have good access to infrastructure all the way around. Got utilities all the way around both sites, drainage access currently, and that will only improve as the city reconstructs Lidle and each of these side streets. Access, the downtown has a good grid network, tends to allow multiple ways out of the same spot, not to create bottlenecks. We have planned these buildings to keep that circulation optimal by keeping our access points off of Lidle. The judicial center has two access points, both of those are on North Church Street. Those are going to be very low vehicular uses. One of those is for a dock that will have very limited use, and the other is for the subterranean garage that Matthew mentioned earlier, has about 25 parking spaces for judges and other key personnel at the judicial building. The parking garage has two access points, one off Maple and one off Walnut respectively, both being side streets, which will allow Lidle to keep free-flowing as much as possible. Security, that's a very important feature to a building like this, not only for it to actually be secure, but for it to portray a secure feeling to the public. I think the architects have worked very diligently at both of those items, and you'll see that throughout the design. Parking, as I mentioned, you've got the parking garage to be open for public use, but obviously heavily dominated by the use of this particular building. And then we've got our own dedicated spaces for the judges underneath the judicial building itself. We've also planned for two areas of on-street parking. The first one of those will be along Burton on the north side of the judicial building. There's about 10 spaces planned there, and those will be reserved for the sheriff's officers. That was at the request of the sheriff's department for a couple of reasons. One, that's easy access, and two, it further enhances that feel of security that they're looking for from this building. The other sect of public parking on-street will be north of the parking garage along Lidle. That was developed through conversations with staff and their roadway designer, and will be constructed as part of the roadway plan, really to help recreate some of the on-street parking that may be lost in other places due to the reconstruction of Lidle Street, to try to keep the -- replace that for the businesses that are downtown, not really for our use. Building itself, you'll see starts with good quality materials. Brick mentioned earlier, a lot of meetings went into form, function of the building, but a lot of thought went into the aesthetics, how it's going to fit with our downtown neighbors. It's a very large building, we know that. It's very -- it'll be very imposing, but the architects, along with the DRC, and really a lot of public input, I feel like, have helped shape this building and pull from other features locally to help mesh well with our downtown and overall community as a whole. As we mentioned earlier, the drug court, which you can see kind of in the background here, will remain in place. And as Matthew mentioned, it is a six-story building plus the subterranean garage. All that will equal about 155 feet in height. Again, here's kind of an overlay where the architects have kind of drawn from the cupola, from the historic courthouse. They don't want to copy that per se, but they did want it to have some similarities. And that's what you'll see throughout their design, is similarities to other features that are prominent in our community. The arches from the Oakland mansion, there's a lot of characteristics to this building that make you think of the existing drug court building or other historic features along East Main Street, some of those residences there. All those combined really create a timeless architecture that'll serve our community for decades to come. The north side, I think we've all become accustomed to four-sided architecture through our work in the gateway, and this building will definitely have that, have detailing on each of the four sides. It'll draw from the downtown. I think the back really portrays a multiple storefront kind of look that you see in our down -- our formal downtown area. This blow-up of the north side, this is where the sheriff's parking would be dedicated. This is just really meant to portray that, even with the mass and scale and height of this building, the detailing that's going on on the building itself, the streetlights, the street trees, will really bring that back down to a pedestrian scale all the way around the building, make it a very pleasant building to be walking by, instead of just being a blank mass wall. Just another perspective from a different time of day, this would be at dusk. You can see, no matter what time of day, this building's going to have a lot of interesting shapes, forms, and lines, not just a blank mass at night. Some internal pictures, this is the security area, the grand staircase that'll serve the first and second floor, just past the secure area. This building will have some tremendous views back across our downtown. And then bringing, you know, high-quality materials not only outside, but on the inside to create a first-class courtroom facility. The parking garage, really just more of the same. They are utilizing some of the same design characteristics, the same materials, so that this project, even though it's separated diagonally by two streets, will really identify as one project, and they belong together. Matthew said it is a four-story, that will allow for two additional stories in the future in addition to the pedestrian bridge. We do not anticipate that pedestrian bridge ever being necessary, but it was brought up and requested to be planned to allow it by the DRC, so we have made allotments for that in our design. And then we talked a lot about the site, the building, but no project's really complete without being rounded out by, you know, a real strong landscape package. Here, we're hoping that the landscape really softens the edges. The building has to look secure, but it doesn't have to be overwhelming to anybody passing by. Our main focal feature on landscaping is going to be creating a park-like setting, really between the existing drug court building and a formal entryway to the judicial center. It'll have a lot of trees and lawns. It will be informal in nature, really more of as a reprieve to the people using this building, just due to the stressful nature that comes with the judicial center itself. Just a view coming off of Maple up to the main entry, and a view coming directly off of Lidle. Timing's always of interest. We anticipate starting demolition on the existing structures later this month, as soon as some of those tenants move out. And then formal site work, we would anticipate starting in early 2016. That, of course, that is dependent upon a successful rezoning request, as well as a successful site plan approval process later this year. All that would line up for an early 2018 completion date. That would be both the judicial center and the garage finishing at the same time, as well as the roadway improvements that the city is currently planning as well. And myself, Brick, or any of the architects team would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions from members of the Planning Commission for Mr. Taylor or Mr. Murfree?
I have a quick question, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am.
In our book, do we see the -- even though we say we're not really -- the bridge is not expected to be done, but we're approving that in here in this plan, is there anything in here about the bridge?
There's not, because there's not been a, honestly, a lot of thought put into what the bridge would look like. Our anticipation is, we just want to get the use of the bridge approved, and then, of course, if that's every -- ever required or desired or proposed, it would come back before the Planning Commission at a site plan level with the architecture presented back then.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Blomley.
Chairman Lamb, I did want to mention, we do have the zoning map. If we could pull that up. We didn't get to pull that up earlier. In full disclosure, we found out the culprit was me. I forgot to plug the computer in, so. As you can see, the Central Business District is located just to the south of the subject property, and the Rutherford County Office Building was also zoned as a planned development directly across Maple Street from the proposed judicial center. Also, I wanted to mention, to get on the record, that we did receive an email from Ms. Andrea Lowery, who wanted to get her feelings known on the -- in support of the rezoning request, and it is, I've put copies of that in front of your seats as well today, so that'll become part of the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Any other questions?
Well, yes, let's figure this out. Do we -- is it a four-story parking garage or a two-story parking garage?
It's a four-story parking garage. It kind of portrays as a two-story, but it is a four-story.
Okay.
One reason it portrays as a two-story on there is because the Maple Street entrance is about 10 feet higher in grade than the Walnut Street entrance, and so we took that looking from the judicial side, so you really, there's one level that'd be completely underground.
I see, okay.
Did you give us anything in here showing how the four-story garage would look?
The four-story?
Uh-huh.
What you see in there is the four-story. It just, from that direction, it just portrays as that.
Because from the side we're looking at, it's two stories, but like, if you were looking at it from the D&amp;J side, it'd be four.
Looking at it from the four-story side?
Yeah.
And Matt, I believe, just to address any concerns, the additional two stories, if they are ever built, would mirror the architecture of what's proposed.
Absolutely. It'd be the brick and the precast concrete, just extend it up another two floors.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by here. We'll open the public hearing, each of these public hearings, and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against the proposal. When you come to the microphone, please give your name and state your address, if you would, for the record. Make all your comments to the Planning Commission. If you have any questions, the staff will try to make notes of your questions, and we'll answer those at the conclusion of the public hearing. If you would, please maintain, we've got quite a few people here tonight that might like to speak, so we will be observing the three-minute time limit, so keep your comments as brief as possible in no more than three minutes. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd
Hi, don't panic, because they're like, oh, it's Kathleen, she kept talking three minutes. Hi, my name is Kathleen Herzog, I'm the Main Street Director, and good evening, Ken, who knows this to be true, and Chairman Lamb. Quickly, Main Street has been totally involved with this project of relocating the judicial building, and I'm sure some of the commissioners will remember this. Back in the day, and I have plenty of copies for this, the Industrial Development Board paid for a Hite-Palma study that seriously recommended that we move the judicial building off the town square because of the burden it put on the infrastructure, et cetera. So fast forward to, I have notes here also from a 2004 board meeting, signed by none other than Joseph A. Lot, after the study was funded by, I think, the city, the county, and the Industrial Development Board recommending the exact location of the judicial building, which is what's been talked about tonight. So basically, Main Street has supported this project for years. Brick referred to 10 years. We have resolutions that we have made to the Chair of the Design Committee and the PBA, which I can make available to all of you, but we're just here tonight to tell you, we are in complete support of the system move, the move of the judicial building, and we have worked very closely with all the members of this committee and board, and we're actually thrilled and hope that in our lifetime, we'll see this as the anchor for our gorgeous historic downtown. I have here with me, where'd they go? I have here with me two members of the Main Street Board who will say a word or two.
If it's appropriate, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. As a member of Main Street's Board, I chair the Design Committee and have been able to sit in on all these design meetings and watch, and I just wanted to briefly say, they have listened, this committee's listened to every piece of input we've had. We've gathered input from the community. I believe that they're absolutely going to build a monument to our downtown, and they've put a lot of effort into it, and I think we'll all be pleased with the end product. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Jakes.
To Chairman Lamb and the members of the Commission, I'm Gloria Bonner, and I am the Chair for the 2015 Main Street Board. And we were very encouraged by the opportunity to convene a meeting with Mike Pickleheimer. And as you know, for the past 30 years, Main Street has been actively engaged in maintaining the cultural integrity of historic downtown. We are very pleased with the fact that he listened, carried the information back to his committee, and we are excited about the revisions and the tweaking of the facility for our historic downtown community.
Thank you, Dr. Bonner.
Thank you.
Ms. Herzog, Mr. Jakes, Dr. Bonner, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate you being here. I want to thank each of you for your dedication to this organization and for the hard work you put in for Main Street, and all the members of Main Street for their wonderful asset to our community. They've done a lot of good work for the community, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion by members of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Taylor, I still, okay. The parking garage?
Yes, ma'am.
Is going to be four stories to begin with, but maybe add two more later?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that's, basically, we're saying the structure itself, the columns, the footings, all the stuff that you really won't see are going to be sized to allow for up to six stories. We don't think that it needs it right now for the parking demand and for this project's scope.
Okay.
Ma'am, is there one piece parking on the roof?
Yes, I believe there's, the roof has surface parking on it, of the garage itself.
Does that count as one of the goals?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That helps clarify the picture we're looking at a little bit.
Yeah, really, from that perspect-- Yeah, really, from that perspective, you see about three floors if you count the roof. And if, from the other end, you have one floor that's really below grade right there.
Right.
You get over to, if you're looking at it from MED, you'll see four true floors if you count the roof.
Mr. Taylor, you said one, one level will be on the surface of.
Yes, sir.
Is that written? No. That's what it says. You going to ask another question about the parking garage?
No, I'll let you. Ms. Jones?
I'm going to ask a different question, different subject.
Yes, ma'am.
Foundation plannings will not be required along the judicial building's northern facade and the parking garage's eastern, western, and southern facades?
The, the parking garage itself, I'll start there. We have planned for plannings along the base, but with the parking garages built basically property line to property line. And so we've planned for those to be in the right-of-way. That's obviously subject to the city engineers, since it's in public right-of-way there. But, and then along the north side of the parking garage, we will definitely have, we've got it planned there as well, along with some street trees. And on the judicial center side itself, I believe we've got a little bit of green there, but we've, it's only about two feet, so it's not going to be a whole lot of plannings that could go there.
Ms. Jones, we did bring to Mr. Taylor's attention that on the parking garage, those shrubs on the maple and walnut sides of the garage were in the public right-of-way. And, of course, anything that's planted in the public right-of-way is subject to the approval of the city engineer. And so we wanted to make sure, we cautioned him that those would have to be approved. I think it's their intent to plant those if permitted by the city engineer. However, at this point, we don't know if that will be acceptable or not.
So then, were there, like, variances to build right up to the, or is that part of a downtown?
The, as far as the setbacks, with a planned development, they get to, they, the design they submit becomes the zoning for the property. So, so in essence, the, what they're requesting is to be able to build right up to the property line, up to certain property lines and certain portions of the building. And as a planned development, no, no further variances would be required.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Smitherman?
This isn't a question for Mr. Taylor, I don't think, but maybe Mayor Burgess or someone can answer this question. Catherine mentioned the fact of the judicial building moving off of the square. What do you think will be going into the current judicial building? If you know.
I really don't know, but it will be some sort of continued use by Rutherford County. Offices, storage space that we desperately need for records, et cetera. So I really, on purpose, not allowed us to focus too much on that, because I don't want us to defocus trying to really get this approved. But it's going to be some continued use and for some needed expansion of some of our office spaces.
Okay.
Mayor Burgess, thank you very much for all the wonderful work you've done on this, too, by the way. A lot of work. Any other questions?
If there's no other questions, knowing Ms. Lowery like I do, if she approves it, I'm going to make a motion that I approve it.
Motion is made. In seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much, folks. The second public hearing tonight is a rezoning application for approximately 3.4 acres located along Summit Court, to be rezoned from RS-15 to residential duplex. John Jones is applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is for you to consider a zoning change request for properties located along Summit Court. Summit Court is a cul-de-sac street located off of Dejarnet Lane, as shown on the map that's on the screen. You can see that the subject areas are colored two different colors, blue and orange. This request came to the Planning Commission by the applicant, Ms. Norris, whose representative is John Jones. She requested that her property be rezoned from its current RS-15 district, which is single-family residential district, to RD, residential duplex district. An additional study area was included, and I'll go into that in just a moment. The property, as I mentioned, is zoned RS-15 in that single-family residential district. The properties to the north are also zoned RS-15. On the corner of Dejarnet and Summit Court are residential homes, but across Dejarnet Lane are some schools. You can also see on the map that Oakland High School, which is also zoned RS-15, is located to the east. To the south is our property zoned RS-12, which is also a single-family residential district. It just has a different minimum lot size from these properties. And the properties to the west are zoned RS-15, single-family residential district. In total, the study area includes five parcels. The one parcel, which is shaded orange, was requested by Ms. Norris, and she requested for her property to be rezoned to RD. When we researched the properties, we discovered that they were, they, of the, four of the five currently have a duplex on them. One of the properties has a single-family home. And so, and you decided to study a larger area with the option of either approving or disapproving, rezoning for all five parcels or for just the requested area. The properties were developed in the county, and they were developed as duplexes. The city annexed these properties in 1986. Mrs. Norris's house was built in 1980, and in 1986, the city annexed them. There was no companion zoning change request, so at the time of annexation, nobody requested a zoning change. And in the county, the property was zoned for single-family purposes, but the way their zoning was during that time, there was a conditional use which allowed the duplex. So because it was zoned for single-family purposes when it was annexed, it came in with an interim zoning of RS-15. That being said, the four duplexes on the property are not permitted by right in RS-15 district. RS-15 does not allow two-family dwellings, which is what a duplex is. So if they were completely destroyed, they could not be built back as two-family dwellings, but would need to be built back as single-family dwellings or some other permitted use. The, because those are two-family dwellings, and they've existed for quite some time, you're considering changing the zoning to allow them by right. So the RD zone would allow those two-family dwellings by right. There is one parcel that is a single-family home that's being considered to be changed from RS-15 to RD duplex. The RD zone does not mandate that the properties be developed with a duplex. It simply gives an option that they can be a single-family home or a two-family home. So the single-family residence would continue to be able, to be a single-family residence, and that would be a permitted use. The, the applicants have indicated to me that the requested area, they desire to subdivide that property into two lots. And so this would allow, this property is a little over an acre, and whether or not it gets rezoned, it could be resubdivided. The zoning merely speaks to the use of the property. So can it be a single-family or two-family dwelling? Mr. John Jones is representing the applicant, and I believe he's here if you have any questions from him. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing before opining upon their request and making your recommendation to City Council.
Okay. Mr. Jones? Seeing you stand up, I presume you have something you'd like to say?
How you doing, Chairman Lamb? Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I appreciate you having me up here tonight. I'm John Jones. I'm here tonight on behalf of Dorothy Norris. She lives at 2537, 2539 Summit Court. It's a, it's a large duplex, which she lives in one side, and the other side, she is vacant. She doesn't rent it out, and she's been there for several years. Her late husband, Leonard Norris, built that property years ago, I think 1980 is what he said. And when I, Ms. Norris is at the point in her life where she's thinking about selling her property. We were looking at different options. The one thing that I noticed when I was at the property, in fact, I thought it was actually two lots I was looking at, because the duplex is shifted over to the right-hand side of the lot. And I asked her if she, if that was a separate lot, and she indicated, no, it was all part of her property. And so we kind of, I did some exploring about maximizing her profit out of the property, possibly cutting off and creating another half-acre lot beside her. In that exploration, talking to the city, I just assumed that it was already zoned duplex because it was a duplex, and there was three other duplexes in that cul-de-sac. And I found out that it's not even zoned a duplex. And, and during that investigation, I think Ms. Green pointed out, if her property burnt down or was lost in some type of, you know, tornado or whatever, that she would have to build back a residential property. And that got us to thinking that we probably need to try to get these other duplexes zoned duplex, so that they would have the right to build back what they, what they had and to make themselves whole. So that's where we're, we are tonight, is just asking consideration for the rezoning. There is one single-family home kind of in the middle of the four duplexes, and those folks are here tonight as well. And from what I understand, this would not prevent them from still remaining a single-family home, or even if their home burned down, they could build back a single-family home. But it would also give them flexibility to even do more if they wanted to, and build a duplex. So I don't really think it would be negative to them. At some point, we are going to come back and ask for a resubdivision of the lot beside her, or part of her lot to another lot. Originally, in talking to Huddleston and Steele, it was, it was, the platted four two lots, somewhere along the lines, it ended up as one lot. The only thing I can surmise, it probably had something to do with septic at that time, which now, her duplex is on sewers, so that's not, but that's, I guess that's a deal for another day. So tonight, I'm just asking you to consider rezoning Ms. Norris's property along with these other four properties from residential R-15 to residential duplex.
Okay.
I think I said that correct. Thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Jones?
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. Questions or comments by the Planning Commission? There are none, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval. I recommend approval for second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Third public hearing tonight is a rezoning application for approximately 6.6 acres located along New Salem Highway, to be rezoned from Commercial Highway to RM-16. Cornerstone Development is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is for you to consider a rezoning request made for property located north of New Salem Highway, or Highway 99, or Salem Highway. I guess it's a highway of many names. This property is currently zoned CH, and that's Commercial Highway District. It's, to the south is property that's zoned RS-15, in that single-family residential district. And that's the location of the Methodist United Fellowship Church, and also the Boxwood Plantation House, which is a house with historical significance in our community, and I believe is also on the National Register of Historic Places. The properties to the west are zoned RM-16, and that's multifamily residential district, and that allows a density of 16 dwelling units per acre. And that's the location of the Westbury Farms Apartment Community, just before the Public Shopping Center, which is further to the west. The properties to the east are zoned CF, and that's Commercial Fringe District, and that's the future location of the Walmart Neighborhood Market, which is the grocery store concept that Walmart has. And on the corner, of course, is a gas station. St. Andrew's Place Plan Development is located to the north, and that's PRD, so that's for residential development. This portion of New Salem Highway, as you may know, is on the major thoroughfare plan, is proposed to be widened by the Tennessee Department of Transportation. I believe those plans are prepared, however, we, as staff, do not have a timeline for that moving forward. But there are future improvements. This subject property is zoned Commercial Highway District, and about 59.9 acres is zoned Commercial Highway District. And it's also zoned multifamily residential district, and about 35.5 acres is zoned RM-16. And it's owned by, I believe, the Bell family, who has a contract with Cornerstone Development to have it developed. The applicant's desire to rezone a 6.6-acre portion of the property from CH to RM-16, and that's shown in the orange on the map before you. And it's their belief that the RM portion of the property, which is basically the rear portion of the property, needs frontage along this major highway, so they're proposing that area to be rezoned. At your next meeting, you will consider a master plan for this property. Initially, the applicant had submitted that in act last month, but I didn't want you to review that master plan until you considered this zoning change request. So if this request is approved, then the, then a total of 66.5 acres will be zoned RM-16, multifamily residential district, with 16 dwelling units per acre. So 66.5 will be RM-16, and 29 acres will be zoned CH, Commercial Highway District. Mr. Matt Taylor is representing the applicant, and we have in your agenda materials, a transportation study, Mr. Taylor, will go over from Fishbach. And we also have the master plan, which you have not considered yet, but I wanted you to have the ability to review that. I'll invite Mr. Taylor to lecturn at this moment. You should conduct a public hearing before making any recommendations to City Council.
Good evening. Really, the request is to allow the potential multifamily site to have a front door out on the main arterial. I think that's been a consistent theme that you've heard from the higher-end, more prominent multifamily projects that have come across, come through here in the past five years. And so we're just trying to set that one up for the same success. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? I can, Mr. Taylor? I'll open the public hearing at this time, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name is Ed Davis, and I live at 3336 Berry Side Drive in Salem Cove, which is directly across the street from Scales Elementary School. And we were here, I don't know, gosh, the time flies, but I'm guessing a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, when the, when you, when the meeting was taking place for approving the project. The project was approved, and we pleaded with the council at that point, please don't let any traffic come through Mershon Drive. And if you'll notice on the drawing, it shows going into Mershon Drive. Now, I don't know if it's going to or not, but we don't need any traffic coming through our little neighborhood. And there's going to be so many apartments over there that it's going to be a racetrack. And we got some kids there, and we just don't want traffic coming through. And so we're very concerned about how the drawing is depicting traffic coming through. They got plenty of opportunity to egress through Salem Highway and also Cason Lane. So we were just asking for a third time, we were assured last time, but we were asking a third time, because there's changes on this committee, that no one, that this not be approved, that Mershon does not go through. That's our plea.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Davis, and I live at 3336 Berry Side Drive. And my concern is with the rezoning, that it states here that it will increase the units by 106 units if they approve the 6.6 acres that they're trying to get. And for any of you who have been out on our New Salem Highway in the mornings and in the afternoon traffic, you know what it's like. It's bumper to bumper, with no timeframe on when they plan on widening the highway there. I'm just concerned with the number of units that are being allowed and the number of people that are going to be on that road in addition to what's there now. And in our little community of Salem Cove Crossing, our road dumps out into Scales Elementary. And in the mornings, that is also an issue with the traffic there. So I would ask that the council take into consideration that Mershon not be an access to there, just because of the number of children that walk from the existing apartment complex that's already at New Salem and St. Andrews, that it would just increase the traffic flow way too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, appreciate you letting me talk tonight and counsel our Planning Commission. I also live at Salem Cove Crossing. I'm opposed to...
We know you, would you give your name and address?
I'm sorry, PC Cove, and I live at 3366 Berry Side Drive. I'm opposed... we have 68 units in our complex, and really, our street comes straight in and makes one loop out, and that's the only entrance and exit we have. So I'm opposed to them... I'm not opposed to the complex itself if they won't use Mersham Drive. It's... If... Many of you know how bad St. Andrews is anyway. You can't get up and down it because of the cars parked on it and the traffic, and of course, the school zone. Westbury was smart enough to use two entrances, one off St. Andrews and one off 99, and I only hope that Cornerstone, the developer, will not use Mersham Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coe. Anybody else? Nobody else coming forward? I'll close the public hearing. Okay. Ms. Green, can you comment on their questions pertaining to traffic on Mersham and number of units?
Sure. I believe Ms. Davis took the number of units from my staff comments, and so I came up with the amount of dwelling units, the maximum possible, not knowing how many they're gonna approve. So if it's the 6.6 acres is multiplied by 16, so 16 dwelling units per acre on 6.6 acres, then there would be 106 units that could go on that property. So I was giving you a maximum case scenario, and that doesn't include the density bonuses. And I've got the illustration for the master plan on the screen, and I don't know if it's available to be on the computer. And I try to zoom in as much as I can, and you can see Mersham Drive is here, and this master plan shows that connection. We did review this master plan with Dana Richardson, the city's traffic engineer, to see if this is the transportation department's desired connection. Of course it is. And actually, when the development for Mersham Drive was developed and reviewed, we wanted to have an additional way in and out of that development. And so that street currently deadens into the property with the expectation that some point in the future it would be extended. So it is the staff's review of this plan that the connection would be beneficial, and it would be beneficial especially for those folks trying to get to 99, to get them off of St. Andrews Drive. And we did run that by our transportation department to see how that would function. You can see there are other connection points as well, and one is to the development to the north. And then the third would be to the east, to the Walmart Neighborhood Market in that area. So it's good for service delivery, and it's good for traffic flow to have that connection. But of course, you can review that at the master plan review and make any modifications at that time. The connection, the zoning really, that you're considering tonight doesn't affect that connection, but that master plan that you'll review this month will.
Any questions from members of the planning commission?
Yes, sir. So Ms. Green, that, the drawing that you have up there, you know, I don't see that drawing. We don't see that Mersham?
No.
We don't see all that that you've got over there on the, with the connection.
This is it? It's not oriented... This is Mersham?
Oh, and so we don't have the drawing, anything showing what you've got up there, all the lots and stuff?
It doesn't extend into that. Mr. Taylor's illustration only shows the back of some lots, and I don't know if this...
I saw those off to the top of the page.
I see. Okay, okay, yes.
Salem Cove lane?
I can't...
Mr. Taylor, do you have something?
Yeah, I did want to just clarify that, you know, what we're requesting is just for the zoning up at the front, and it's not for the road network. Like Ms. Green said, we would... If this is successful tonight, then we'll be back before you in a couple of weeks with the full traffic impact study and the master plan modified with the staff comments. I will say that the preliminary traffic study indicates significant improvements on Salem Highway, as well as a possible signal there at Salem Creek Drive, so...
So what we'll have coming back is gonna be a site plan or master plan approval. This is really their only chance to come talk to us and tell us that that's what their concerns are.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Duly noted, but that's, we're not voting on the road tonight. We're voting on the zoning only.
And I will say that with this zoning request, with that master plan, that property doesn't even touch the road that they're talking about with that master plan, but...
The property we're voting on doesn't touch.
Right.
Right.
When we come back with that master plan, Mr. Taylor, let's have a little broader view of the area out there showing the subdivision, and I want to see the connectivity of Mersham and the adjacent streets to it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the planning commission? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval for the rezoning request for the 6.6 acres.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next public hearing is a PUD amendment for parcel E of Victory Station PUD, approximately 9.7 acres located along Fortress Boulevard, Murfreesboro IL AL Investors LLC is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Our next public hearing is for a PUD amendment for the Victory Station Plan Development. The property is located along the west side of Fortress Boulevard, just to the north of Franklin Road, State Route 96. You recall that earlier this year, in the wintertime and the springtime, we had a PUD, a similar PUD amendment for what is called parcel F of the Victory Station Plan Development. And if you will look up to the map where my cursor is located, that is the area that was rezoned earlier this year, or where the PUD was amended, rather, to allow for an assisted living facility. After the zoning went into effect, the applicants, in doing their due diligence, encountered some environmental constraints on the property, and rather than attempting to work through those environmental constraints, they decided to move the property to the south, which is the area colored in blue, which is parcel E of the Victory Station Plan Development. So they are requesting to amend the Victory Station Plan Development parcel E in order to develop a assisted living facility on the subject property. Now, the existing Victory Station Plan Development would allow a retail, a commercial retail development with a maximum square footage of 133,500 square feet building and 445 parking spaces. This use would be for assisted living, memory care units, and senior independent living for a total of 176 units. The layout would be very similar to the layout that was proposed with the parcel to the north earlier this year. And there is the proposed layout of the facility. Now, this parcel is much shallower than the parcel F, which was approved for the assisted living facility earlier this year. So there's not as much separation from that rear property line. But it should be noted that instead of being directly adjacent to a single-family residential subdivision, Trafalgar was located directly to the rear of the previous parcel. This is actually directly adjacent to a large, single-family estate lot. So there is a... So the development directly to the rear of the subject property is not as dense, and there are not nearly as many houses that would be impacted by the proposed location. And this would be considered a downzone going from a commercial use to a residential use such as this. 176 units are proposed. I placed a revised pattern book in front of you. The only difference in this pattern book and the one that was provided in your agenda materials earlier last week is the fact that the number, the mix of units has changed. Instead of having 102 independent living units, there will be 93 independent living units. Instead of having 48 assisted living units, there will be 54 assisted living units. And instead of having 26 memory care units, there will be 29 memory care units. But the overall number of units would remain the same at 176. One point that I didn't want to mention is that parcel F, which was the area that was amended earlier this year, I think that we can anticipate the developer of Victory Station, the overall developer, which is Swanson Development, to be coming back to the planning commission at some point in the future to amend parcel F for another type of use, perhaps taking that back to a multifamily designation, which is what the property was originally zoned for before it was amended to be used for assisted living. Now that the assisted living is proposed to move down to parcel E, if this, the current zoning is effective, then, or the current rezoning request is effective, then there would be no need for the parcel F to be zoned for assisted living. And so we could expect Swanson to come back with a PUD amendment request. But whether that comes back as multifamily or a different use still remains to be seen at this point, as no application has been filed for parcel F. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and I'd like to invite Mr. Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith and Associates to make a brief presentation on the proposed plan.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Appreciate being here tonight. Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith, and I will make this very brief, because I did not really plan an extensive presentation, as Matthew's gone over most of the details. I do have Wyn Bishop and Paul Sacks with me tonight, with Smith Packett out of Roanoke, Virginia. Again, we were here earlier in the year. You know, unfortunately, as Matthew said, we ran into an environmental condition on the site in the form of a wetlands that just cost a lot of money and time to mitigate. Unfortunately, it was right in the middle of the property, and there was really no way to work our development around that with what we were presented with. But Wyn and them still wanted to invest in Murfreesboro. They still felt strong about the market here. They liked the Victory Station PUD, and fortunately for us, the Swansons had another piece of property available, and so decided to look at that, make sure we did our due diligence on that, to make sure there was no environmental conditions associated with that. So that's why we're here tonight, just to move forward on that. Again, the product is very similar, same number of units, just a little bit of different mix, same architecture we were talking about before with all missionary products, still three stories, just massaged a little bit to fit the long linear nature of the site. So with that, I can show you additional pictures. You saw the site plan up there, you know, quite a bit of open space associated with it still, as was previous, with the previous development or previous scenario on there. So again, we're here to answer any questions and hope we can move forward with the project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Any questions for Mr. Caldwell before he takes his seat? Once again, thank you, Mr. Caldwell. It's good to see you. Gentlemen, thank you for coming back. I got your Illinois-Alabama investors correct this time, so, okay. That being said, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no questions from members of the planning commission, we're ready for a motion.
I make a motion we approve, subject to any staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations. Item E is an annexation petition for approximately 12.6 acres located along Osborne Lane. Stuart Conway is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Our next item, as you mentioned, is an annexation request for property located along the north side of Osborne Lane. It is directly to the east of the Ridgeport subdivision, and it's the area colored in orange on the map in front of you. Mr. Conway recently purchased the property and has requested that, or has petitioned, rather, the, has petitioned that the property be annexed into the city limits, so that it can benefit from city services for potential development. There is a companion zoning request on the agenda, which is the next item. The property is bordered on its south and west sides by the city limits. The right-of-way of Osborne Lane is located in the city limits already, so no additional right-of-way is needed to be annexed at this time. The, no other property would be needed to be annexed, and no 10-foot strips would be required in this situation. I will mention that the subject property is directly to the south, and you see on the map in front of you that the property to the north is still in the county. That's the property that the planning commission considered for annexation and zoning for the Valley Brook Development, and that will be going before the city council on November 5th. And we'll have some additional information about that under Other Business today. But with that being said, the property owner has petitioned the city for annexation. The property is within the city's urban growth boundary, and the property is contiguous with the existing city limits. According to the Annexation Feasibility Study and Plan of Services, the city will be able to provide services to the subject property upon annexation, and sewer will be available to the subject property upon extension of sewer by the developer if and when the property is developed. The planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Conway is in the audience, as is his representative, Mr. Clyde Roundtree from Huddleston Steel Engineering.
Okay. Okay, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
This is intimidating, being on TV. I think you did this so we wouldn't come. But my name is Lauren Johnson, and I have two properties in the Ridgeport subdivision. Both those properties were, one was purchased pre-tornado of '09 and rebuilt in the same area in 2010. We were told at the time that that property, that the request for annexation would not be developed. We were told it could not be developed. There's a gully in that area, and there's quite a bit of wildlife that lives there. There is a tree that two hawks have resided our entire time that we've been there since '09. There's also, of course, other wildlife within the area. But we're requesting more information about that annexation. There is a fence line as well that we were told would be maintained by the previous owner, and we were unaware that it would have recently been sold and purchased by someone else. So more information and more clarity about what's going on, and also protection for that wildlife if at all possible. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Roundtree, you don't have to participate in the public hearing to speak, since you're the applicant, so you may come forward.
Thank you. Clyde Roundtree, Huddleston Steel Engineering. In terms of clarification, the expectations are that the homes that would be built on this piece of property will be very consistent with those that are on Frank Robinson Drive, which is the adjacent property. So it's a higher-end kind of home. It's a very pleasant neighborhood. Drove through it tonight. Obviously, there'll be some change on the character of the land. That's something we can't prevent with development. But just wanted to make sure you realize that for clarification purposes, what our client plans on proposing for that property is very consistent with the homes that are on the road adjacent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Mr. Blomley.
Chairman Lamb, in the engineering department's analysis of the site drainage, it did not identify any potential hurdles for development. It says that the property drains to the northeast over to Bear Branch, and it did not identify any drainage challenges in its analysis of the property.
Any questions from members of the planning commission? If there are none, we're ready for a motion.
I make a motion we approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item in the final public hearing is a rezoning application for the same property, approximately 12.6 acres located along Osborne Lane to be rezoned RS-12 simultaneous with annexation. Stuart Conway is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This is for the same property that we just considered for annexation. The applicant has requested a zoning of RS-12, Single Family Residential District, with minimum lot sizes of 12,000 square feet simultaneous with annexation. In looking at the adjacent zoning classifications... In looking at the adjacent zoning classifications, the property directly to the south, which is the Hampton subdivision, is also zoned RS-12. The property directly to the west, which is the Ridgeport subdivision, is also zoned RS-12. And the property to the northwest, which is the Reserve subdivision, is also zoned RS-12. And you can see that to the north, as I mentioned, is the proposed Valley Brook subdivision, which is proposed to be zoned PRD, Planned Residential District. So in looking at the surrounding zonings, the applicant decided to make a request for RS-12 to be consistent with the surrounding zoning classifications. By way of comparison, if the property came into the city without a requested zoning classification simultaneous with annexation, it would be given an interim zoning classification of RS-15, which is the city's least dense single-family residential zoning classification with minimum lot sizes of 15,000 square feet. The RS-15 zoning would yield approximately 27 lots on the subject property, once you take into account the area that would be used for public streets and public rights of way. The RS-12 zoning will yield approximately 34 single-family residential lots, which would be an increase of approximately seven lots over what would be allowed with the RS-15 zoning. Now, of course, that's all a guess, not a guess, but a rough calculation over what could be permitted under the two zoning classifications, to give you a kind of a baseline for comparison. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Conway and Mr. Roundtree are available if you have any questions for them.
Okay. Any questions right now from Mr. Conway or Mr. Roundtree?
Mr. Blomley, I know we just annexed it, but if we had not annexed it, what was it zoned prior in the county? What could have been built on it under the county conditions?
I believe it's zoned RM in the county, which we typically, or we typically think of RM as multifamily residential. They consider that medium-density residential, which I believe permits 15,000 square-foot lots if, on septic, but I'm not certain. Is it 20?
To have a septic, it's 20,000.
Okay, so 20,000 square-foot lot minimums.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak on this proposal.
The 15,000 square-foot lot, you said it would be a 27, as far as the housing goes? Is that what you were saying?
Approximately 27 lots.
Okay. So if there's only 27 lots there, is it possible to maintain the trees where the hawks are living? As opposed to squeezing in those several extra homes, also taking away the wildlife that's there and existing already? So if we can have the 15,000 square-foot lots, does that incorporate both needs?
It's up to the developer, Mrs. Johnson. You know, his application is for 12,000 square-foot lots, so that's what we're considering tonight.
Okay. But it's up to you to approve that. Is it correct?
It is.
Okay. Well, again, please take that into consideration, then. The wildlife off of Osborne has been diminished greatly. There were two lots where the Speedway went in, and a whole entire tree line was taken down for, we still don't know for what reason that was done. It was on the very edge of the property. So the diminishing of a state that laws its wildlife, we're just watching it diminish greatly, especially along the Osborne area. Thanks.
I understand. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anybody else? If not, I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of this commission?
Mr. Chairman, that is extremely consistent with all the surrounding zoning, and I would make a motion for approval.
Motion's made for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. We have staff reports and Other Business. One item on that tonight is annexation petition for approximately 60.62 acres along Compton Road. Mrs. Virginia Caballero is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. No public hearing is required on this, just a minor modification to the map. This is the annexation that I just mentioned a few minutes ago, just to the north of the property that we just considered. After the planning commission recommended approval on this annexation, we noticed that the 10-foot strip to the north of, or excuse me, to the south of the subject property, follow my cursor right there, in order for this parcel here not to be completely surrounded by the city limits, the 10-foot strip had to protrude out somewhat to the west of this property line here. And so we were basically modifying the map so that there is a 10-by-10 area that we are excluding from the annexation in order to allow this parcel here to have a continuous 10-foot strip to the outside of the city limits. So what we would ask you to do is to approve the revised annexation map to, so that we will send that to the city council in order to prevent that parcel from being completely surrounded by the city limits, and also to approve the amended zoning map exhibit as well, which also takes that 10-by-10 area outside of the area that would be zoned PRD. I'll be happy to answer any questions. This is, we noticed this and wanted to get it cleaned up before it went to city council on November 5th.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Blomley?
We have created a donut hole. Is that what you're saying? And we're trying to fix it?
Pretty much.
Okay, gotcha.
Trying to fix it for the council.
Created.
There's no questions. We're ready for a motion.
Gentlemen, recommendation for approval, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That completes the agenda I have today. Mr. Blomley, Mr. Green, you have anything? I was coming your way.
I have, I have one short thing. We have been focused on putting the resolutions in order for the next council meeting for the proper way to approve Plans of Services, Annexation, and Zoning under the new state law that took effect back in May. That has been a fairly complicated process, and it completely slipped by me that we had a Plan of Services being approved on tonight's agenda. So I would like to ask that the planning commission adopt a second resolution specifically approving the Plan of Services that you have reviewed and that was presented for the annexation of this 12.6 acres along Osborn Lane. In the future, these will be presented to you as separate items. There'll be a hold of public hearing on the Plan of Services, then consider the Plan of Services. Hold of public, can't talk. Hold a public hearing on the annexation, consider the annexation. And if there is a companion zoning, then hold a public hearing on the zoning, and then consider the zoning. So to clean this up and make sure we don't have a gap in our records, I would request a specific motion adopting a resolution to approve and recommend to council the Plan of Services that's been prepared here for our item 4F, the 12.6 acres on Osborn Lane.
For 4F or 4E?
E.
4E?
I'm sorry. 4F, 4E?
Yes.
Yes, the annexation.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Drives? If not, we're ready for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the Plan of Services for 4E.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker, anything else?
I have nothing.
Ms. J. Coe, do you have anything? Okay, thank you. There's no further business. We stand adjourned.